Mr. McCord? Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Stenit?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Beard?
Present.
Mr. Blues?
Here.
Ms. Crosby?
Here.
Mr. Ellinger?
Hi.
Ms. Feigl?
Here.
Ms. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Ms. Henson?
Here.
Ms. James?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
And Ms. Lawless?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum, so we'll proceed. It's my pleasure to welcome to the podium Father Chris Clay from Cathedral of Christ the King here in town. Father?
Thank you, Mayor Newberry. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, good and gracious God, here we are gathered in gratitude for the blessings that you've given us, the gift of life, of love, of the beauty of this spring day, of the good work that your city council and all the people of Lexington do. We praise you and thank you, eternal Father, and we just come that on this day we remember in a special way Mayor Don Kaiser of Paris whom you've called home to you, that you have mercy upon him and console his family and friends who grieve his loss. Finally, eternal Father, send forth your Holy Spirit's gifts and fruits upon your sons and daughters whom you've called to serve the people of Lexington, that your sons and daughters who serve on the city council, those who work for the police department and the fire department, for the garbage department, and so many other ways. We thank you for all the good work they do, eternal Father. And finally, bless them with the gift of discernment to know how to make this community a place of greater justice, love, and peace for all. May Almighty God bless you all this night and bless this meeting you are about to have, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Councilmember Feigl?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the resolution honoring Virginia Bell be taken out of order and given first reading.
Second. Have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? All in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
A resolution honoring Virginia Bell.
That was very much to the point. Thank you.
Okay, I would move that we suspend the rules and do a second reading.
Have a motion and second to suspend the rules for purposes of giving that resolution a second reading. Any discussion? All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
A resolution honoring Virginia Bell.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Feigl has moved. Councilmember Myers has seconded that we approve that resolution. Any discussion? I see none. All in favor then please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed indicate by voting no electronically. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Stenit?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Feigl?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Enthusiastically on behalf of my mother and family.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
And Ms. Lawless?
Yes.
Thank you. That resolution is approved, and the chair will recognize Councilmember Feigl.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like for Councilmember Lane to accompany me to read this resolution. Why don't you go up there so I don't look behind me? Go up there so everybody can see her. Just stand out there in front. Yeah, stand with her. So she's not alone. Wayne, would you like to join her? This is her husband, Mr. Wayne Bell. This is a very special lady that Ed and I have become acquainted with through the Sanders-Brown Center on Aging, and I'll tell you a little bit about what she's done. But just to say that she is a model for those, to demonstrate to those how to age gracefully. And we have many of those special seniors in our community. And if you know of a special senior who also demonstrates graceful aging, I would encourage you to go to the Sanders-Brown Center on Aging website to make a nomination for that person. Whereas, starting a second year at age 60, Virginia received her master's degree in social work from the University of Kentucky in 1982, and in 1984 became a family counselor at UK Sanders-Brown Center on Aging. And whereas, Mrs. Bell witnessed the subjective care approach that met only the basic needs of Alzheimer's patients, and soon realized that people suffering from dementia need to be connected, known, respected, and loved. And whereas, Ms. Bell pioneered the best friends model to help family members, friends, and staff members maintain a loving, positive relationship with victims of dementia, in turn making patients feel safe, secure, and valued. And whereas, Ms. Bell and her colleague David Troxell co-authored the acclaimed The Best Friends Approach to Alzheimer's Care that presented an innovative way to care for those with Alzheimer's, and soon followed with collaborations on The Best Friend Book of Alzheimer's Activities, The Best Friend Staff, and A Dignified Life. Whereas, The Best Friends Approach uses positive strategies that build on older adult strengths and abilities, and offers the flexibility to adapt to all individuals at all points along the ever-changing continuum of the disease process. And whereas, The Best Friends Approach is celebrating its 25th anniversary. And whereas, Ms. Bell now in her late 80s has crusaded for victims of Alzheimer's disease at conferences around the world and in dozens of publications, and is in still great demand as a speaker. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lexington Fayette County, Fayette-Urburn County government that the Council of the Lexington Fayette-Urburn County Government, upon the 25th anniversary of Best Friends Approach to Alzheimer's Care, hereby extends its gratitude and compliments and honors Virginia Bell for her many outstanding contributions that have helped countless Alzheimer's patients and their families and friends, that this resolution shall become effective on the date of its passage, passed by the Urban County Council and signed by Mayor Jim Newberry.
Madam Clerk, if you would give a second reading to the ordinances that are entitled a second reading.
Number one, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit the 2009 Consolidated Plan Grant Application to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, and to accept the grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $3,508,440 federal funds, are for the FY 2010 Community Development Block Grant Program, $2,45,837, Home Program, $1,357,050, Emergency Shelter Grant Program, $91,408, and the American Dream Down Payment Initiative, $14,145, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $319,337 from various funding sources as local cash match, and $67,408 in-kind match appropriating funds pursuant to FY 2010 Schedule I, authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget, and authorizing the mayor to executive agreements for the approved plan. Number two, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette-Urburn County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule number 128. Number three, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, which grant funds are in the amount of $337 federal funds, are for the purchase of explosive device mitigation and remediation equipment for the Division of Police's bomb squad, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule number 129, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number four, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to the agreement with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for acceptance of additional federal funds in the amount of $156,000 for the air quality planning project, $54,000, and the mobility coordination project, $102,000, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $39,000 as a local match, and extending the projects through June 30, 2010, and appropriating funds pursuant to FY 2010 Schedule number two. Number five, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Board of Emergency Medical Services, which grant funds are in the amount of $10,169.49 Commonwealth of Kentucky funds, are for the purchase of a Gilderscope Ranger intubation device for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to FY 2010 Schedule number three, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget.
Is there a motion to approve those ordinances?
Second.
Councilmember Myers has moved their approval. Councilmember Gordon has seconded that motion. Is there any discussion? See none, so we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of those ordinances please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed vote nay electronically. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Stenit?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Feigl?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
And Ms. Lawless?
Thank you. Those ordinances are approved. Madam Clerk, if you'll give reading to those ordinances entitled a first reading.
Number six, an ordinance changing the zone from a two-family residential, R2 zone, to a downtown center business, B2B zone for a 0.4789 net, 0.5859 gross acre, and from a high-density apartment, R4 zone, to a downtown center business, B2B zone for 0.9066 net, 0.9846 gross acre, for property located at 200 West High Street, a portion of 318 South Mill Street and 323 and 327 South Upper Street, subject to certain use restrictions imposed as conditions of granting the zone change, trustees of the First United Methodist Church of Lexington, Kentucky. Number seven, an ordinance changing the zone from a single-family residential, R1B zone, to a neighborhood business, B1 zone, for 0.31 net, 0.46 gross acre, and from a single-family residential, R1C zone, to a neighborhood business, B1 zone, for 1.86 net, 2.22 gross acres, for property located at 3256 and 3300, a portion of Lansdowne Drive, subject to certain use restrictions imposed as conditions of granting the zone change, Club Facilities LLC, AMD. Number eight, an ordinance amending Articles 17, 8, 23A, 27, and 28 of the zoning ordinance to expand the allowable signage in and near downtown in some mixed-use zones, and to relocate all sign regulations to Article 17. Number nine, an ordinance amending Articles 1-5 and 4-7D, 9C of the land subdivision regulations for waivers regarding infill and redevelopment and sidewalks, and to update the subdivision plan procedure listing. Number 10, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Department of Education, Division of School, and Community Nutrition, to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $147,210 federal funds, are for the 2009 Summer Food Service Program, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule number 130, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 11, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from the School for the Creative and Performing Arts in the amount of $350 for the Reforest the Bluegrass Project, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule number 131. Number 12, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from Kentucky American Water Company in the amount of $3,933.25 for the Reforest the Bluegrass Project, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule number 132. Number 13, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette-Urburn County Government to reflect current requirements for funds in the amount of $775 for the Division of Historic Preservation from Neighborhood Development Funds for Historic Preservation Week activities, and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule number 133. Number 14, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of $301,664 FHWA planning and $40,000 Federal Transit Administration Section 5303 federal funds, are for the Division of Planning Unified Work Program, FY 2010, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $56,562 FHWA planning and $10,000 Federal Transit Administration, as a local match, subject to sufficient funds being appropriated in FY 2010 appropriating funds pursuant to FY 2010 Schedule number four, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 15, an ordinance of the Lexington Fayette-Urburn County Government authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding with certain agencies of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of its $8 million general obligation bond anticipation note, Series 2009C Eastern State Hospital Project, which amount may be increased or decreased by an amount of up to 10 percent, approving a form of note, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the notes, authorizing and directing the filing of notice with the state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the notes, creating a note payment fund, creating a sinking fund, authorizing acceptance of the bid of the purchaser, authorizing a preliminary official statement and final official statement for the notes, authorizing a continuing disclosure agreement for the notes, and repealing inconsistent ordinances. Number 16, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette-Urburn County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule number 134. Number 17, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette-Urburn County Government to reflect current requirements in the council office for funds in the amount of $2,125 from Neighborhood Development Funds for the Senior Intern Program, and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule number 135. And number 18, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of $348,000 federal funds, are for the ITS-CMS Intelligent Transportation System Congestion Management System Traffic Improvements Project, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $87,000 as a local match appropriating funds pursuant to FY 2010, Schedule number five, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 19, an ordinance amending Sections 21-33 and 21-34 of the Code of Ordinances, allowing employees to use their accumulated vacation and sick leave in any increment, amending Sections 21-33 and 21-37.1 of the Code of Ordinances, providing that employees may use accumulated compensatory and holiday time with verbal approval, amending Sections 21-33A, 21-34A, and 21-38B2 converting leave time accruals from days to hours. Number 20, an ordinance amending Section 2259 of the Code of Ordinances, providing that seasonal employees shall no longer accrue vacation and sick leave or be eligible to purchase health insurance, providing that part-time employees shall work 24 continuous months in order to accrue vacation and sick leave, and shall no longer be required to work 88 hours for two consecutive pay periods in order to be eligible, providing that part-time employees shall work 24 continuous months in order to be eligible to purchase health insurance, providing that part-time employees shall accrue vacation and sick leave at a rate of five hours a month for each, providing that part-time employees may use vacation and sick leave in any increment, providing that supervisors shall no longer be required to keep records relating to leave time accruals and expenditures, providing that part-time employees may obtain verbal approval to use vacation time, and deleting Section 2259C. Number 21, an ordinance amending Section 2152 of the Code of Ordinances, changing the job title of One Position of Nutritionist, Grade 113N, to One Position of Nutrition Coordinator, Grade 113N, in the Division of Family Services. Number 22, an ordinance creating Article 14 of Chapter 16 of the Code of Ordinances to establish a system of water quality management fees, defining terms relating to the water quality management fees, imposing a water quality management fee on every parcel of land in Fayette County except undeveloped parcels, railroad tracks, state and federal roads, urban county government streets and roads, and private streets used exclusively for access to single-family residential properties, providing that Class A properties, single-family and farm properties, shall pay $4.32 per month for each parcel, and that the charge for Class B properties, all other parcels, shall be based on the amount of impervious surface expressed in equivalent residential units, ERUs, determined to be 2,500 square feet of impervious surface multiplied by $4.32 per month, but in no event shall any parcel pay less than $4.32 per month, providing that water quality management fees shall be adjusted annually each fiscal year beginning July 1, 2011, in accordance with the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, providing for monthly billing, and providing that the owner, tenant, or person responsible for payment of water service and/or sewer service charges is also responsible for payment of the water quality management fees, providing for allocation of fees among multiple occupants for shopping centers, apartments, condominiums, et cetera, with the owner remaining fully responsible for payment of all water quality management fees, providing for collection of fees, including establishing a penalty of 10 percent and interest of 1 percent per calendar month on bills remaining unpaid for more than 30 days, and authorizing and directing the Department of Law to institute legal proceeding for collection of fees, establishing a 30 percent discount program for qualifying senior citizens and disabled citizens, to establish a grant program, providing for qualifying customers to receive a 50 percent adjustment to their bill for water quality management fees, providing that all monies collected through water quality management fees shall be separately identified and accounted for, and all expenses relating to the Urban County Government's stormwater program shall be separately identified and administered, providing an appeal process for persons who consider that fees applied are inaccurate, establishing a water quality fees board to review denials of requests for adjustment of sanitary sewer user fees, and decisions on applications for adjustment to water quality management fees, providing that the board shall be composed of five citizens appointed by the mayor, and an ex officio member from the Department of Law, and providing that no two citizen members may reside in the same council district, providing that a formal review and audit of the water quality management fees shall be performed on or before November 30, 2014, and every five years thereafter, and providing that at least one public hearing shall be held every time the review and audit is performed, establishing a stormwater quality projects incentive grant program to provide cost-sharing assistance for eligible projects that will improve water quality, and repealing Section 1663C relating to the sanitary sewer user fee appeals board.
Thank you very much. If there are no motions, Councilmember Blues?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to suspend the rules in order to allow a second reading to number 15 at the request of the administration, and to be able to move the Eastern State Hospital Project forward.
Have a motion and second to suspend the rules for purposes of giving item number 15 second reading. Councilmember Beard?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to suspend the rules and give a second reading also to number seven under ordinances' first reading.
All right. We'll add that as a friendly amendment if there's no objection. Any others? And the motion is to give, is to suspend the rules for purposes of giving items seven and 15 second reading. There's no further discussion. Those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Number seven, an ordinance changing the zone from a single-family residential, R1B zone, to a neighborhood business, B1 zone, for 0.31 net, 0.46 gross acre, and from a single-family residential, R1C zone, to a neighborhood business, B1 zone, for 1.86 net, 2.22 gross acres, for property located at 3256 and 3300, a portion of Lansdowne Drive, subject to certain use restrictions imposed as conditions of granting the zone change, Club Facilities LLC. And number 15, an ordinance of the Lexington Fayette-Urburn County Government authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding with certain agencies of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of its $8 million general obligation bond anticipation note, Series 2009C Eastern State Hospital Project, which amount may be increased or decreased by an amount of up to 10 percent, approving a form of note, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the notes, authorizing and directing the filing of notice with the state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the notes, creating a note payment fund, creating a sinking fund, authorizing acceptance of the bid of the purchaser, authorizing a preliminary official statement and final official statement for the notes, authorizing a continuing disclosure agreement for the notes, and repealing inconsistent ordinances.
Floor is open for a motion to approve. Councilmember Blues has moved to approve those two items. Councilmember Crosby has seconded that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed indicate by voting nay electronically. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Stenit?
Aye.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Feigl?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
And Ms. Lawless?
Thank you very much. Those ordinances are unanimously approved. Madam Clerk, if you will give second reading to the resolutions entitled a second reading.
Number one, a resolution accepting the bid of AMB Industrial Sheet Metal in the amount of $19,950 for rooftop makeup air unit replacement for the Division of Water Quality. Number two, a resolution accepting the bid of Jack Doherty Supplies Incorporated in the amount of $319,400 for 15 cubic yard combination sewer cleaner for the Division of Water Quality. Number three, a resolution accepting the bid of Jack Doherty Supplies Incorporated in the amount of $224,200 for three cubic yard combination sewer cleaner for the Division of Water Quality. Number four, a resolution accepting the bid of Spectrum Contracting Services in the amount of $129,444 for the Castlewood Park Picnic Shelter and Restroom Building for the Division of Parks and Recreation, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Spectrum Contracting Services relating to the bid. Number five, a resolution accepting the bid of Burger LLC in the amount of $34,422 for secondary digester transfer pumps for the Division of Water Quality. Number six, a resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Dolores Couch, Eligibility Counselor, Grade 110E, 1235.52 biweekly in the Division of Adult Services, effective April 20, 2009; Stacy Jacobs, Computer Analyst, Grade 115E, 1973.84 biweekly in the Division of Computer Services, effective April 6, 2009; John Angel, Public Service Supervisor, Grade 111N, 19.104 hourly in the Division of Water Quality, effective April 13, 2009; Laevan Sensabas, Social Worker Senior, Grade 113E, 1613.28 biweekly in the Division of Youth Services, effective April 13, 2009; Ratifying the Permanent Civil Service Appointment of Sean Gatewood, Public Service Worker Senior, Grade 107N in the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry, effective April 6, 2009; Ratifying the Unclassified Civil Service Appointment of Gary Gardner, Construction Supervisor, Grade 118E, 2898.48 biweekly in the Division of Waste Management, effective March 23, 2009; Approving the Unclassified Civil Service Appointment to the Office of the Urban County Council, Diana Queen, Aid to Council, Grade 000E, 2038.47 biweekly in the Office of the Urban County Council, effective April 1, 2009. Number seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from Kentucky's Division of Emergency Management of 20 suction quick draw with rechargeable batteries for use of the Division of Fire and Emergency Services at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for extension of the South Limestone Multimodal Traffic Study Project through June 30, 2010, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number nine, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a green wave from Boston Road Development LLC for property located at 3881 Dillon Place, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 10, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for extension of the traffic signal upgrades and traffic control projects through June 30, 2010, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 11, a resolution ratifying the Department of Law's execution on behalf of the Urban County Government of a settlement agreement, stipulation, and recommendation, and any other necessary settlement documents in Kentucky Public Service Commission Case Number 2008-00427 pertaining to the rates of Kentucky American Water Company. Number 12, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of understanding with Windstream Kentucky East LLC for the Downtown Lexington Streetscape Project at a cost not to exceed $41,918. Number 13, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute certificates of consideration and other necessary documents for property interest for the Sugar Mill Mitigation Project, at a cost not to exceed $411,520. And number 14, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with Lafayette High School Baseball Boosters Incorporated, $200, Black Church Coalition of the Bluegrass Incorporated, $1,450, and Iglesias Nueva Vida Incorporated, $500, for the Office of the Urban County Council, at a cost not to exceed the sum stated.
Sorry. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Thank you, Councilmember Mayor. Have seconded by Councilmember Henson. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor of those resolutions please indicate by saying aye those, excuse me, by voting aye electronically. Those opposed vote nay electronically. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Stenit?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes, on all except number 11. No on 11.
Mr. Blues?
Sorry. No on 11, yes on the rest.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Feigl?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
No on 11, yes on the rest.
Mr. Gray?
No on 11, yes on the rest.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. James?
No on 11, yes on the rest.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
And Ms. Lawless?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All of those resolutions are approved unanimously. And Madam Clerk, do you have the vote on number 11?
Um, let's see. That would be...
For our order.
Five, 10 to 5.
Did we get a correct vote on the total up there?
I have it recorded as no's.
Okay. Are you going to?
I can't record it there.
I mean, I'd like to see what the vote was.
It was 10 to 5.
I think the only way we could do that is by segregating out the vote, and I have no objection if the council would like to entertain a motion to segregate the vote, but I think we have it duly recorded.
It is recorded.
Right. That motion's approved by vote at 10 to 5, that resolution, rather. All right, Madam Clerk, if you'll give a reading to, first reading to the resolutions entitled a first reading.
Mayor, I move to place on the docket for tonight's meeting a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a merchant services application and agreement with National City Merchant Services for credit card processing for purchases through the Internet.
Second.
We have a motion in second to add that item to the docket for purposes of first reading this evening. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Any other motions? All right, Madam Clerk.
Number 15, a resolution accepting the bid of Univar USA Incorporated establishing a price contract for liquid chlorine for the Division of Water Quality. Number 16, a resolution accepting the bid of Mary's Cleaning Service establishing a price contract for custodial services Central Kentucky Job Center for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number 17, a resolution accepting the bid of National Workwear establishing a price contract for work shoes for the Division of Waste Management. Number 18, a resolution accepting the bid of Tennis Technology Incorporated in the amount of $18,418 for the Woodland Park Tennis Court's new color quote coat for the Division of Parks and Recreation, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Tennis Technology Incorporated relating to the bid. Number 19, a resolution accepting the bid of EC Matthews Company Incorporated in the amount of $181,460 for the Versailles Road Corridor Enhancement for the Division of Community Development and the mayor's office, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute any necessary agreement with EC Matthews Company Incorporated relating to the bid. Number 20, a resolution accepting the bid of EC Matthews Company Incorporated in the amount of $20,939 for wheelchair lift replacement for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with EC Matthews Company Incorporated relating to the bid. Number 21, a resolution accepting the bid of Churchill McGee LLC in the amount of $261,750 for the Masterson Station Tac Barn for the Division of Parks and Recreation, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Churchill McGee LLC relating to the bid. Number 22, a resolution accepting the bids of VF ImageWare Incorporated, Kentucky Uniforms Incorporated, Galls, and U.S. Calvary, establishing price contracts for uniforms for the Division of Community Corrections. Number 23, a resolution accepting the bid of Bluegrass Mailing Data and Fulfillment Services establishing a price contract for the distribution of Fun Guide for the Division of Parks and Recreation. Number 24, a resolution accepting the bids of Lawman's and Shooter Supply Incorporated, Galls, Kentucky Uniforms Incorporated, and Bluegrass Fire Equipment establishing price contracts for fire recruit equipment, 2009, for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number 25, a resolution accepting the bid of Mary's Cleaning Service establishing a price contract for custodial services, public safety, for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number 26, a resolution accepting the bid of Bluegrass Towing Incorporated establishing a price contract for towing services for the Divisions of Police and Code Enforcement, the Department of General Services, and the Parking Authority. Number 27, a resolution accepting the bid of MAC Tire Recyclers Incorporated establishing a price contract for tire loading, transporting, and recycling for the Division of Environmental Policy. Number 28, a resolution accepting the bid of Protech Security Sales establishing a price contract for ballistic shields for the Divisions of Community Development and Police. Number 29, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amended and restated grant agreement with the Cabinet for Economic Development, the State Property and Buildings Commission, and Belkan Engineering Group Incorporated, to include additional terms and to replace the original grant agreement as approved pursuant to ordinance number 325, 2005, and amended by Resolution 697, 2008, at no cost to the government. Number 30, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a revised lease agreement with Fritz Farm Services LLC, contract number 6087, to provide for additional acreage at the West Hickman Wastewater Treatment Plant to be planted or mowed at no cost to the government. Number 31, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a trail design agreement with CDP Engineers Incorporated for design of the Veterans Park Mountain Bike Trail at a cost not to exceed $22,354. Number 32, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a trail design agreement with Third Rock Consultants LLC for design of Masterson Station Trails at a cost not to exceed $40,930. Number 33, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Division of Emergency Management, and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $133,720 federal funds under the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, and are for replacing the generator and upgrading the electrical service at Fire Station 1. Number 34, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the University of Kentucky for space at the University of Kentucky Hospital Emergency Room for use as a clinical practice area for the sexual assault treatment program at a cost not to exceed $3,000. Number 35, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $119,587 federal funds under the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, and are for reimbursement of costs related to the incarceration of undocumented criminal aliens. Number 36, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a deed of easement with Kentucky American Water Company for permanent and temporary construction easements across the property located at 2500 Flying Ebony Drive, 810 Star Shoot Parkway, for a water line for the sum of $19,778 for the permanent easement and $275 per month for the temporary construction easement. Number 37, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sidewalk easement and a temporary construction easement from Bannister Allen Properties, Inc., for the property located at 458 Georgetown Street for the Georgetown Street Sidewalk Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $100 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 38, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with Lafayette High School Baseball Boosters, Inc., $575, Lexington Tree Foundation, Inc., $600, and Henry Clay Memorial Foundation, $950 for the Office of the Urban County Council, at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Number 39, a resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointment of TJ Taylor Sewer Line Maintenance Superintendent, Grade 116E, 2406.40 biweekly in the Division of Water Quality, effective April 13, 2009, ratifying the permanent sworn appointments of Kenneth Ragland, Fire Captain, Grade 316N in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective March 1, 2009, Jeremy Wheatley, Fire Lieutenant, Grade 315N in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective March 1, 2009, Shawn Brown, Fire Major, Grade 318E in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective March 1, 2009, approving the unclassified civil service appointment of Harry Ashby, Public Service Worker, Grade 106N, 13.287 hourly, in the Division of Waste Management, effective April 27, 2009, Darrell Owens, Public Service Worker, Grade 106N, 11.560 hourly, in the Division of Waste Management, effective April 27, 2009, Eric Higgins, Jr., Public Service Worker, Grade 106N, 11.460 hourly, in the Division of Waste Management, effective April 27, 2009, Marshawn Cowan, Public Service Worker, Grade 106N, 11.560 hourly, in the Division of Waste Management, effective of April 27, 2009, Brendan Scott, Public Service Worker, Grade 106N, 10.364 hourly, in the Division of Waste Management, effective April 27, 2009, Ernest Beatty III, Public Service Worker, Grade 106N, 10.862 hourly, in the Division of Waste Management, effective April 27, 2009. Number 40, a resolution of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government authorizing the advertisement for bids and the distribution of a preliminary official statement for the purchase of the principal amount of its $8 million general obligation bond anticipation notes, Series 2009(c), Eastern State Hospital Project, which amount may be increased or decreased by an amount of up to 10%. Number 41, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Energy and Environment Cabinet, and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $113,154 Commonwealth of Kentucky Funds, under the Kentucky Household Hazardous Waste Management Grant Program, and are for support of a one-day household hazardous waste recycling event for Lexington Fayette County. Number 42, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Energy and Environment Cabinet, and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $14,035 Commonwealth of Kentucky Funds, under the Kentucky Recycling and Household Hazardous Waste Grant Program, and are for support of a partnership with Habitat for Humanity to establish a program to collect, bulk, and resell leftover latex-based paint to generate revenue and reduce hazardous landfill-bound waste. Number 43, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one to the contract with Todd Johnson Contracting for Phase 2D of the Meadows-Northland Arlington Public Improvements Project, increasing the contract price by the sum of $7,978.86 from $666,372.41 to $674,351.27. Number 44, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of agreement with Kentucky State Police for reinforcement of overtime expenditures for lab personnel for conducting forensic examinations for the cold case squad project at a cost not to exceed $4,000 in grant funds. Number 45, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for extension of the Metropolitan Medical Response Systems Project through June 30, 2009, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 46, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with AT Solutions, Inc., for training and for FBI-certified bomb squads in Lexington, Louisville, Owensboro, Paducah, and the Kentucky State Police, and the purchase of two assault support hand-entry kits at a cost not to exceed $341,215.28. Number 47, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Inacon Group, LLC, for development of an all-hazards disaster preparedness plan for the 2010 World Equestrian Games, at a cost not to exceed $22,000. Number 49, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a letter agreement with Mount Joy and Bressler, LLC, for performance of professional financial auditing services of all FY 2009 Urban County Government funds, at a cost not to exceed $115,450. Number 50, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a statement of work agreement with Metaformers, Inc., for infrastructure performance management support for project synergy, at a cost not to exceed $60,000. Number 51, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a letter of intent with the University of Kentucky pertaining to the operation of the Family Care Center Health Clinic located at 1135 Red Mile Road to the University of Kentucky, effective July 1, 2009. Number 52, a resolution amending Sections 1 and 2 of Resolution 544, 2006, which authorized and directed the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements for various public projects for the Office of the Urban County Council, deleting the allocation to Hollywood Mount Vernon Neighborhood Association, Inc., $10,000. Number 53, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Fleetwood Land Management Services, LLC, for the exchange of properties located near Midland Avenue as part of the Bluegrass Aspandale Collector Street, Phase 2, Shropshire Boulevard Extension, at no cost to the Urban County Government. And the new number 54, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a merchant services application and agreement with National City Merchant Services for credit card processing for purchases through the Internet with monthly payments to vary based upon actual usage.
Thank you very much. Are there any motions with regard to those resolutions? Councilmember Gordon?
Yes, Mayor. I move to give second reading to number 51, and the reason is that Michael Karpf has already signed the UK portion of this agreement, and they would like to move forward.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Morton. Councilmember Blues?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to give second reading to number 40. This, too, is part of the financing package for the Eastern State Hospital.
Thank you. Councilmember Wallace?
I'd like to give a second reading to number 18, so that project can move along and meet the grant deadlines.
Thank you. Councilmember Lane?
I'd like to suspend the rules and give a second reading to number 30. This is a grass-cutting, hay-cutting contract, and time is of the essence.
It is indeed, if my yard is any indication. Councilmember Morton?
Mayor, I'd move to suspend the rules to give second reading to Resolution 54. This is to provide Internet credit card services for the Lily Rain Barrel Program, so that can get started.
Thank you. Councilmember James?
Thank you, Mayor. Number, I'd like to request suspension of the rules to give second reading to number 37 and 53, and both of these have to do with time on projects. Thank you.
I'm sorry, 53 and...
37.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Myers?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to suspend the rules and give second reading to number 46. It has homeland security and other implications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll deal with all of those additions as friendly amendments. My list now indicates that the motion would be to suspend the rules to give second reading to items 18, 30, 37, 40, 46, 51, 53, and 54. Did I miss any? 18? Yes, I think I did. If I didn't, I should have. All right. Is there's no further discussion? Those in favor suspending the rules to give second reading to those items, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Number 18, a resolution accepting the bid of Tennis Technology Incorporated in the amount of $18,418 for the Woodland Park Tennis Court's new color coat for the Division of Parks and Recreation, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Tennis Technology Incorporated relating to the bid. Number 37, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sidewalk easement and a temporary construction easement from Bannister Allen Properties, Inc., for the property located at 458 Georgetown Street, for the Georgetown Street Sidewalk Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $100 plus usual and appropriate closing costs.
Madam Clerk, I also had item number 30 on the list.
Excuse me. Number 30, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a revised lease agreement with Fritz Farm Services LLC, contract number 6087, to provide for additional acreage at the West Hickman Wastewater Treatment Plant to be planted or mowed at no cost to the government. Number 40, a resolution of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government authorizing the advertisement for bids and the distribution of a preliminary official statement for the purchase of the principal amount of its $8 million general obligation bond anticipation notes, Series 2009(c), Eastern State Hospital Project, which amount may be increased or decreased by an amount of up to 10%. Number 46, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with AT Solutions, Inc., for training for FBI-certified bomb squads in Lexington, Louisville, Owensboro, Paducah, and the Kentucky State Police, and the purchase of two assault support hand-entry kits at a cost not to exceed $341,215.28. Number 48, I'm sorry, that one's already gone. Number 51, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a letter of intent with the University of Kentucky pertaining to the operation of the Family Care Center Health Clinic located at 1135 Red Mile Road to the University of Kentucky, effective July 1, 2009. Number 53, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Fleetwood Land Management Services, LLC, for the exchange of properties located near Midland Avenue as part of the Bluegrass Aspandale Collector Street, Phase 2, Shropshire Boulevard Extension, at no cost to the Urban County Government. And number 54, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a merchant services application and agreement with National City Merchant Services for credit card processing for purchases through the Internet with monthly payments to vary based upon actual usage.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve those resolutions? Councilmember Ellinger has moved to approve those items. Councilmember Henson has seconded that motion. Any discussion? All in favor, then, please indicate by voting aye electronically. All opposed, vote nay electronically. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Stenit?
Aye.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Feigl?
Aye.
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. Lawless?
Thank you. Those resolutions are unanimously approved. Those resolutions are unanimously approved. We have several communications from the mayor for your consideration. Is there a motion to approve them? Councilmember Blues has moved that they be approved. Councilmember Myers has seconded the motion. Any discussion? All in favor of approving those communications, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries. You have several communication items, two communication items for information purposes only. I think the report of building inspection has previously been circulated. Are there any announcements? That brings us down, then, to the public comment section. Mr. McCarthy, do you care to comment tonight?
For the record, my name is Bernard McCarthy. My address is 515 Harry Street. First off, one of my coworkers, a lady by the name of Elizabeth McCullough, asked me to point out that she strongly objects to the proposed stormwater fees. Okay, having mentioned that, I've fulfilled the promise I made yesterday to her. The main thing I want to preach at you guys on is, instead of changing one-way streets to two-way, if you really like two-way streets that much, I think you should try extending some of the streets that are already two-way. Extend Fifth Street westward from its current end point across Eastern State to intersect Newtown Pike. Extend Jefferson Street northward to connect to Russell Cave. Extend Midland Avenue from Third Street further out to hook onto Magnolia Street, and then extend Magnolia Street to the corner of Floyd Drive and Loudon Avenue. And I would suggest that Young Drive and Ashland Avenue should both be extended to form a four-way intersection where the, at that curve where Third Street currently becomes Winchester Road. And I think, I think we do need all the road capacity we can get, especially if you wish to pack more activities into downtown.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Does anyone else wish to address the council?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here in the matter of firefighter Mark Bramlich, who's been charged with being absent without leave. Administration's recommended a written reprimand, and firefighter Bramlich has signed that and agreed to that.
Move approval.
I have a motion, but Councilmember Gordon, and a second, but Councilmember Myers, that the recommended discipline be approved. Any discussion? Councilmember Lane?
Chief, would it be all right if I asked why he was absent without approval?
Let me get, I'm not sure. We've had a couple, and I'm not sure which one this was.
Okay.
So I can get my notes, and I'll get that back with you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
That's okay.
Thank you. Any further...
First defense.
Any further discussion? All in favor, then, of approving the recommended discipline, please indicate by saying aye.